Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 6.4. Trustee Zia, would you like to start?
Yes, that was mine, yes. So, I had a question on contract number 99737.7. And it is, my question is that I'd like to know if this is total not to exceed the $43,050 that is being proposed for ratification? If this is the cumulative value from inception of doing business with the vendor to date? And if it's not, what is that value?
So, no, it is not the cumulative value. This is the value of the contract for this particular, I'm going to say fiscal year, although it doesn't follow our fiscal year, but it is a fiscal year. The total value of the contract with this particular vendor, we've been contracting with them since 2012, and the total comes to $218,048.
I'm sorry, say that again? 218,000 and?
Forty-eight dollars.
And remind me again, Anne Marie, the ratification for $175,000, is that annually or is that cumulative per vendor? For this concern?
It would be per contract. This is a completely separate contract with this particular vendor. And so even though we've entered into contracts with the vendor each year, this is a new contract that resides on its own.
For same service? Same type of service?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be considered splitting contracts? Because that means it's the same service that they're providing, aren't they?
It wouldn't be considered splitting. You know, bid splitting comes into play if it's one particular project and you're trying to split. So, you know, for example, if our Building P project was under $175,000, I know that's an unrealistic example, but if it were, then it would be considered bid splitting if we said, okay, well, we're going to enter into a contract, or we're not going to bid it, and we're going to enter into a contract, you know, for half of the building, and then we're going to enter into a contract for the other half of the building so as not to exceed the bid amount. These are specialized services that, again, do not require us to go out to bid, and so we can enter into a contract with the vendor each year. And the reason that we do it year by year is because we want to evaluate the services that this particular vendor is providing for us, and we're trying to make the decision on whether or not we want to continue the services. And so each year, we're evaluating it and determining whether or not we have a need for the service. It just so happens that we have continued the relationship with this particular vendor, and we're recommending that we continue it for another year.
And this is the political consultant that we have, correct?
I would say it's the legislative advocate.
Okay, because it's, I'm sorry, it's a political counsel? Well, whatever. I'd like to get a legal opinion on splitting contracts because it's my understanding it's the threshold by circumventing the board's approval into splitting into smaller values. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's happening here, but I'd like a legal opinion on that because it seems that it's parsed out in smaller dollar values that we see, and it comes for us for ratification, not approval. So, if it's possible to get that, I'd appreciate it. And when was the last time this was competitively procured? You mentioned it doesn't have to go to bid, but going based on the presentation that was submitted earlier, only sole source where there's only one supplier, that that's the period where, or the circumstance where we don't competitively procure, I'm assuming there are other legislative consultants that can compete for this work, correct?
Yes, there are.
Okay, did we competitive, when was the last time we went out for a competitive procurement on this service?
I believe it was when we originally entered into the contract with this particular vendor, so that would have been in 2012.
Okay, so almost?
Almost four years. And so, with specialized services like this, typically, we will do the RFQ or the RFP once every five years. And so the plan was already in place that we will, we're proposing to move forward with this contract so that we have some consistency now, and then with the new incoming superintendent president to have a little bit of background. And then if the new superintendent president wanted to continue with the same type of services that this firm is providing, we would go out for an RFP at that point in time. So at the end of this contract period, if it's a service we want to continue, we would do an RFP.
Okay. I would recommend that out of, just to be transparent and be fair and equitable to all folks that fall in the category of similar consulting services, not only on this service, but others, that we honor the five-year period where we kick the tire and we give other people an opportunity to have a bite of the apple, is just a suggestion. That's all I have on this item, and I'll reserve my questions for the other items after the rest of the board asks their questions.
I have two questions, three questions.
On 6.4?
On 6.4. On page 2, CN 99718.1, there's an amendment to a legal council for the Innovation Fund of SoCal not to exceed $62,000. Vice President Bynum, if you could explain what this money is for, but more importantly to me, where does this money come from?
Yes, thank you, President Baxter, for the question, too. I think it's good to explain that. The money comes actually from the Kaufman Foundation. We were part of the Innovation Fund America originally, two or three years ago. Lorraine Community College was the mothership for that effort. There were three colleges in the United States at that time. Any funding that we got through that arrangement, that contractual arrangement with Kaufman said that the funds had to go through Lorraine to be held by them as we were letting them out on the rounds that we were doing with the companies that we were funding. These were pre-seed, high-growth companies. IFA does not really exist anymore. We want to bring those funds back to us here in Southern California. So we had to get legal expertise to work with us to be able to unbundle that relationship with Lorraine Community College and the funds that were being held by their foundation. So, the legal fees here are for that purpose, to work through that process.
And so it's basically no cost to the district?
It's no cost to the district. Kaufman Foundation realized that we needed funds to be able to do that, and so they provided approximately $100,000 for us to be able to do that.
Okay, that's great. Second question I have is on the contracts that are on page 3 and the top of page 4, which are to extend contracts for business advisors to the SBDC. And when I was reading this, I was surprised how many advisors there are and the amount of pay that they receive. And so I wondered, how many clients are there that the SBDC serves during the fiscal year, and also the source of these funds?
Yes, the source of the funds is the Small Business Administration umbrella with the Association of Small Business Development Centers underneath that. That's where the funding comes from. We get approximately $3.7 million a year from SBA. We have to match that.
Match it one-for-one?
We have to match it one-for-one. 50% of that can be in kind. The funds, the backbone of the networks and the centers are the consultants and the business advisors that provide services to the small businesses. We serve approximately 4,000 small businesses a year in the network. The lead center, these business advisors are running through the lead center. We are the lead center for holding the contract for that. They come in and bring specialized services to the effort. It might be in the area of finances, it might be in marketing, it might be in procurement, whatever the needs are. And so we have a cadre of about 100 business advisors total in the network. Probably about 20% of those come through the lead center, and that's what you're seeing right here, are the business advisors for the lead center.
Well, that's very impressive. Let me see if I have one more question. Yes, and then on page 5, what is GoBiz Grant? There are three allocations for GoBiz totaling over $100,000.
Yes, the GoBiz Office is the office of the governor and his economic development efforts. The state of California allocated funds through the governor's GoBiz Office this year to go to the SBDC networks in the state of California. There's six lead centers. We got an allocation of approximately $280,000 or $300,000 to be able to allocate out to our subcenters in the LA region. So that listing of 22,000, 35,000, 40,000, et cetera, that's the money from the GoBiz Office in the state of California going to our centers in the network.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Trustee Malauulu, did you have a question on this particular one?
No, my question is on 6.12.
Okay, so now, do we vote on 6.4?
Yes, and you didn't have a motion on the floor to begin with.
Okay, I need a motion on 6.4.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by Trustee Zia, seconded by Trustee Otto.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, great. Now, we're going on to 6.6. And I was the one who asked to have this polled, and all I wanted to do here, it'll be very quick, is make a comment in praise of the district.
Excuse me, President Baxter, put the motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, I got it. Moved by Trustee Otto, seconded by Trustee Zia. And I'm sorry, I went out of order there. Yeah, I just wanted to praise the college for getting involved in extending the reclaimed water to the Pacific Coast Campus. This is fantastic. I assume you're going to connect the water at the Hamilton Bowl to PCC, and that you're also extending it to the south of Conant area.
Actually, a point of clarification, the reclaimed water is going to south of Conant as well as the Z Building, so O1, O2, and Z Building here on the liberal arts campus. There is not reclaimed water available at the Pacific Coast Campus, and so we will not be hooking up to reclaimed water at the Pacific Coast Campus until the city moves the lines closer. I think right now, the closest line is about five miles.
But we have Hamilton Bowl right across Walnut.
But it's not on reclaimed water.
Ah, oh.
So, what this is doing is we do have two major landscaping projects that are underway with design at the Pacific Coast Campus to make it a more water-tolerant campus, to reduce the amount of water usage that we are doing on that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
Don't run through the sprinklers.
Can we have a vote, please?
Yes, you may. Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, then 6.8. Trustee Zia, I believe you asked for this?
Yes, thank you.
Motion, please?
Oh, yes, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Zia, seconded by Trustee Otto. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, my favorite item to ask about, I love these purchase orders. Okay, 78637, purchase order 78637, I feel like I'm calling out a raffle. Institutional effectiveness, brochures with ETA advertising, and I have a question on, what are this advertising, what are these services specifically for? And, you know, why don't I go through all the ones that I have the same exact question? So, this was one, and then there was 78731, and that is College Advancement and Communications, Meltwater News Reporting Services.
I'm sorry, what was that one? What pages is it on?
Page 3, Meltwater News Reporting Services, Meltwater News, U.S., Inc. And 78821, that is on page?
Six.
Thanks. Okay, 7, all right, page 6, and that is College Advancement and Communications Promotional Video Services Media 360 for a value of $14,739.41. So for all these items, I want to understand what the services were specifically for and what was they used for, and how were they, these vendors selected, and the expenditure to date for these vendors from inception of working with them to date.
So I'll go ahead and cover the first one, and then Executive Vice President Bynum will cover the other two from her area. So the first one, purchase order number 78637 to ETA advertising for $2,100, was for the designing and printing of brochures to market the new strategic plan. So, we needed it done quickly, and we didn't have the capacity to get it done as quickly as we needed it in-house, and so we went outside to get the brochures. There was one quote received, and the vendor was selected after that. Your question was, what have we paid that vendor in total? So over the last three years, the total amount paid to that vendor was $3,526.15.
And I'm sorry, how many, did we reach out to that we got one quote?
We just have one, one quote was received.
Did we only reach to, reach out to this vendor and then just got a quote from them?
I don't have those specifics. I would, I would assume that they probably only did reach out to one vendor, you know, in accordance with our purchasing guidelines. If it's less than $15,000, we only require the one quote. And so it's up to the individual departments to go out and get those quotes and make a recommendation on what vendor they want to use for the services.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning, I just wanted to get the facts. I'm not questioning what, if it was, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, just wanted to, for my own adification. And then on the other two, Executive Vice President Bynum, are you going to?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Zia. You know, I just might add with the one that you just asked about, that was a really quick turnaround. We had to get brochures done and out to present to the institution for the strategic plan, and it was like, I don't know, an eight-day turnaround, and we had one firm that was willing to do that, you know, so that might help explain some of that. Let's see, the Meltwater, is that the next one?
Yes.
Yes, Meltwater, actually, we had two companies propose for this. These companies do what's called clip services, and they, excuse me, they data mine the news on a daily basis, a weekly and a monthly basis, to find out any kind of promotional information or commentary or marketing, or stories about Long Beach City College, and they gather those and submit them to us on a daily basis. You see some of those that come to you. So Meltwater is a company that was able to help us do that. They did have a competitor, but they did a great job with us last year to be able to do this, and so this is just trying to get them to come in again and continue that service for the next year.
And how much have we paid to date to them?
We paid, last year, I think we paid about $10,000. This year, it's about $11,000.
Okay.
It's a one-year contract.
I'm sorry?
One-year contract.
Yes, yes.
And then the other one?
Yes, the other one is Media 360. Media 360 is a local media firm. They do commercials for us. Last year, they did a whole series of commercials, PSAs, and marketing for us to do our summer enrollment. This contract right here is for our spring enrollment this year. It's a major push that we're putting in place. This contract is for $14,700, and I think the last contract was around $13,000.
And were they the only one who was contacted, and did they have another, was it competitively procured?
I think we had two bids that came in for this one, and this is the firm we selected. Two proposals.
Okay, and lastly, I've brought this before, the only thing I haven't seen, I know we have travel expenditures, not just for the board, but the staff, where are those codified and reflected, and why do we not see it on this purchase order listing?
We don't issue purchase orders for travel, and so that's why you don't see them on the purchase order listing. The travel payments would come through and are ratified as part of the commercial warrants, and the process with the commercial warrants, as you know, as we detail out those warrants that exceed $25,000 to provide the board with the information on those. So occasionally, you will see a reimbursement to our local bank account to reimburse it for the travel payments that were made, because those payments aren't made through the Los Angeles County Office of Education like all of our other ones, and when that reimbursement exceeds $25,000, then we do spell that out.
Okay, so if we exceed the threshold that the board has set for that, how does that get managed by way of the commercial warrants?
What are we on?
On purchase order listing. Trustee Kellogg?
No, but are we on the, we pulled an item, and now we seem to be bridging over to something else?
What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that the motion was to approve this item, it was on a certain subject matter, and now I'm here and we're talking about travel vouchers, and I don't understand.
Yeah, the question is why it's not showing up on the purchase order listing, and what happens, how does this board get to know if we've exceeded our threshold that we've set? If it's not showing up on this, it's relevant to this item.
Simply, my point of order is the motion on the floor was a certain specific item. We've dealt with that, we vote on that. We seem to be bridging over into some other items that really are not, it's not the, it's not the motion or the agenda item. That's my point.
Respectfully, you went out of order in the last item, so please, I'd like to get an answer to my question. I've asked this multiple times, so why don't you grant me that opportunity to get that answer?
Leave it to the chair.
Go ahead and answer.
So, I'm confused on the threshold that you're referring to.
It's my understanding it's $25,000 for the board travel.
So you're talking the budget that is established for the board travel?
Right. How do we hold ourselves accountable if we don't see it on this list?
I, and I'm just smiling because I'm, it's not funny. I don't, that's not why I'm smiling, I'm just smiling, like, how do I explain this? With the budget, so the budget is a living document, let's say. We established the budget in September of what all the line items are going to be by the departments, and it is our board secretary who monitors the expenditures of the board travel and whether or not that is exceeded on an annual basis. So, you know, if it gets towards the end of the year, she will, and notices that the travel has gone over what the anticipated expenditures were, then she has the responsibility and accountability to move funds within the budget to cover that. So it really isn't anything that would be reported back to the board that you exceeded a particular line item in your budget.
Okay, I'm going to stop right here. I think we've got work to do on that front because it's not transparent, but I'll reserve it for a later time, and perhaps we can agendize it to look at this, because it's not visible to us when we exceed the funding, and I'd like to take a look at this at a later time, just so we have, just out of the spirit of transparency, which I'm sure you're all about. So, anyway, I appreciate the explanation and the demystifying of this issue for me. Thank you, Acting Superintendent.
Excuse me, Board President Baxter? Just one note for Sunny is that it is in our policy, we have a policy on travel, on who authorizes the travel, who's responsible, and that is the superintendent president delegates to his designee, or he is the one that approves the travel. He signs the claim forms, and that's how it's done. It's, you know, that's just how it's done.
Thank you, maybe at a future meeting.
It's another, yes.
We should look at this.
Trustee Kellogg has a good point, but I also think Trustee Zia has a good point, and maybe at a future meeting, we can discuss this.
As a board, you can look at that.
And are you asking about this?
Yeah, I would just like to comment on this. Madam Chair?
Excuse me, point of order, this isn't before us.
Yeah.
We courteously let Trustee Zia ask questions. It is 10 minutes after 9:00. We've agreed we'll take this up at a later date. I don't want to continue to discuss something that's not on the agenda and is something else. I think it's inappropriate.
Okay, thank you, you're right. I have two questions I had on this, on this motion, and that is on page 7, 78851, $10,000 membership project, Club Y, not for sale fund. What, what was that?
What were you?
Page 7, the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth from the bottom.
Project Y, membership.
Okay.
Superintendent President, membership project, Club Y, not for sale fund, $10,000. You will tell me later.
We will, yes, I will tell you later.
Okay, then the second one, the very bottom of that page, 78855, Superintendent President, Community College Leadership Program tuition invoice is $25,000.
This one I do know. So this is the district's contribution towards our employees who are in the Roche doctoral program.
Okay, it was funny because it said Delora, Inc., and I just wondered what that was. Okay, fine, thank you. Anymore on this, on item 6.8?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, then 6.12, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, moved by?
That's the one I'm pulling.
Oh, okay. So do you want to second it?
I want to ask questions about it first.
Yeah, but we have to put the motion on first.
Excuse me, who made the motion?
Zia and Otto.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, before I ask my questions about these items, I just, I just want to address that throughout the course of the meeting, I've personally extended a lot of grace to discussion not entirely on the item before us, and I would just really appreciate the same courtesy in return. I am very mindful of the time, and I think a lot of the preparation that I do prior to meetings and following up, asking questions and emails reflect that, to kind of expedite the agenda and not take a lot of unnecessary time, but, you know, there should be some respect for the process. I do believe that some discussion might get a little out of hand, but other discussion, I think, is necessary, and some items should become agenda items as a result of the discussion. So, with that, Agenda Item 6.12, I have two questions under Unrestricted General Fund 101, item number 4, $52,215 to the registered county clerk. 101, item number four, $52,215 to the registrar county clerk for June 7th election. And then again on page three, general obligation bond measure LB Fund 47, item number one, $695,882 for the June 7th bond election. I, I just want to know if there's a way we can have those itemized or at least explained? That just sounds like a whole lot of money and I don't understand why the amounts to the county clerk, is it a percentage of the bond measure? Is it a percentage of, you know, what is that amount?
Cost of conducting the election.
Right, just as trustee Otto said, this is the cost of conducting the election and the county registrar will go through and allocate, well, first they identify all the costs related to it and then they will proportionately allocate the costs for our measure to us and they will do the same thing, you know, for any other measure that was, is within the county's ballot. The same thing happens when we have our trustee elections, that the county will send us the bill and allocate proportionately the cost associated with the county running the elections.
May I ask, would any of this money be paid for by the fundraising that, yes, on Measure E, people raised? Or is this a district cost?
Comes out of the bond funds, doesn't it?
This is a district expense. If you recall, you may not recall, but when we reported on our first quarter report, we showed an overage on our, what we had budgeted for election expense in the unrestricted general fund and it was about the, around the $50,000 that we're charging to the unrestricted general fund. The reason being is we had called the county registrar while we were closing our books and asked, you know, how much is this going to cost, give us an estimate. Unfortunately, their estimate was lower than we had anticipated and so that cost difference is being picked up by the unrestricted general fund. The amount that is coming out of the bond fund is actually coming out of when we issued the bonds in September. We, we put that cost into our cost of issuance account and it's coming out of the premium when we issued the bonds. Unfortunately, again, since the estimate from the county was lower, we didn't have enough in our cost of issuance account to cover the entire bill. So that's why part of it's coming out of the unrestricted general fund.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Is that, trustee Otto?